All right, I'd like to call the Coventry School Committee meeting to order. I have 6:02, could we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Patnood.
Here.
Dave Florio.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Colonian. Donna. James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Lovis. I see you Craig, I can't hear you.
I'm here, I'm here.
Laurie Andrews. Sarah Mangiurelli.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So if we could just begin with a moment of silence as we consider the work before this evening. Thank you. Um, let's move forward with the mission state for Coventry Public Schools, Donna.
I got it up here. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all schools in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you so much, very much appreciated. So, we're going to table item number two and just move on to item number three, which is the discussion and vote of the LED lighting proposal for Washington Oak and Coventry High School. It was our reference number one. Mr. Lovis, did you want to begin this, or?
Sure, sure, I'll begin and I know we have, we're supposed to have Mr. Drummond, Jerry Drummond, who works for National Grid.
I am here.
Alright, there you are, sorry.
It shows me as LB Burlingham, using my wife's computer.
Sorry Jerry, I just look at the name. So Jerry's here and also Jason Martin is here. And I want to thank you. So this is an opportunity for us, again, along with the lines of energy savings, that several years ago, when I first came on board, I guess the town had completed an energy bond, and I know some of these LED lights were put in some of the town buildings, maybe some of the school buildings. This is an opportunity, that was done to bond, this is an opportunity for us to, right now, look at Washington Oak and look at the high school and at no cost to the community, and they'll explain the whole process. And at a later date, we'll come back and we have an opportunity to get the bulbs for our middle school. But I'd like to turn that over to, and Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you can put up the first document, then I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Burling, Mr. Burlingame, sorry. Mr. Drummond and Mr. Martin, if you can explain the process a little bit better for the school committee and the public.
I can, I can start to talk while the screen is coming up. So I work for National Grid, I handle just the state of Rhode Island, the state buildings, all of the municipalities, all of the public schools. I used to live in Coventry back when the bond was passed five years ago, living all the way in West Greenwich, so thank you for saving me that long trip to the meeting tonight. What we, what I've done with probably 150 of the schools, more than half the schools in the state, is very similar to what we're going to review tonight, is we have contractors and distributors that go out and do no-cost energy audits on your behalf, and they provide an application into the National Grid system, and I believe the superintendent has received the commitment letters for the numbers we're about to look at. The goal of the program that I've worked with, state purchasing, the state energy office and National Grid, is that there's no upfront cost by the district, your annual savings exceed your annual cost, and we're able to put any of your net cost on your electric bill, but again, you don't begin to pay until the project is completed and the energy savings begin. So my mantra is always, annual savings from your existing operating budget will always exceed your annual cost. So before I go through this, is there any questions?
Nope.
Okay, great. So you did put in about five years ago, high-efficiency fluorescent lighting in a lot of your facilities, both town buildings and school buildings. LEDs were very expensive five years ago, so that's why you didn't do it back then. They've dropped down probably 80% in price in the last five years. So that's the opportunity here is to get LED lighting in all of your, the two school buildings we're going to talk about here, the high school in Washington Oak. This includes labor material, the removal of and disposal of the old fluorescent fixtures. There is a slight bit of mercury in fluorescent lights, the contractor will just, will take care of that. So all the prices you're looking at here are 100% turnkey to you. Alright, so there is a gross cost, which is what the contractor wants to get paid, and we'll talk about how National Grid pays them on your behalf. There's multiple incentives here, but there's an incentive from National Grid, we all see the charge on our electric bill that pays for National Grid to offer incentives. So that total, it's OBR, that's your on-bill repayment or your net cost. So this is the amount that we are going to fund on your electric bill, that's your net cost. You can see, if I divide that by six years, in the case of the high school, we're dividing that by six years, because the simple payback was 5.8 years. Since my mantra was annual savings always exceed annual cost, I've given you a six-year term to pay this back. So you see, your annual cost is $27,344, your annual savings is $28,000. So you have a slight positive cash flow in the high school each and every year, and at the end of that term, the energy savings will continue to be yours and that on-bill repayment cost will go away from your bill. It just showed up as another line item on your bill. If we go to Washington Oak, again, smaller facility, $64,000, small incentive, so your net cost is $63,608. I divide that by three years, I always base this on your payback, so that was about a 2.8 year simple payback. So I am just going to divide that by three years for you. Your annual savings is $27,000, and over a three-year term, you'll pay that back at 0%. So you can see your annual gross cost, I really want you to focus on your net cost because the incentives is what you pay, the ratepayer money. With your annual savings, you can see that your annual savings is $55,249, your annual cost is $48,547. So again, there's no impact on your capital budget, there's no capital here, this is all operating budgets being funded by reductions in your electric bill. So I'll open it up to questions at this point, rather than just keep talking.
Before... Kathy, unmuted.
Kathy, unmuted.
Alright. Um, sorry. I just wanted to tell, to ask everyone, all the school committee members to mute themselves until they're ready to talk, is that true? I think people were getting some feedback. But at any rate, I will, I think it's, what meeting, is this the beginning of the month? Yes. So that means Dave, you have the first shot at asking any questions or comments, do you have any?
Madam Chair, I just want to know if, I know it's a good deal, but I just want to validate, I just want validation from Ms. Megan Dorelli.
Yeah, we discussed this, and I apologize if I'm breaking up, I'll jump on the phone. But we did discuss this in length, and we thought it was a good opportunity to do some upgrades in our building and save on our operating costs over the long run. So I have no problem with how this is looking forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright. So, Luke, you're up, any questions, comments?
So I have some experience with this program directly with Jerry, and we use RISE in Warwick, but we had done the Mickey Stevens, the Air Arena, McThurmit Pool on this program through RISE Engineering, and it is a good program, the one thing I liked about it is it is on-bill pay, so basically 0% interest over that duration. There's always a question, I think, in voter's mind or community's mind of past bonds for energy retrofits, those were paid for through bonds, we, I don't know if we actually realized all that savings, but with the on-bill pay, they run the numbers. LED lighting, unlike the previous lighting, is, looks like it's here to stay, and these buildings look like they're here to stay, because that was potentially one other question was, you know, what happens with the building effort? So these two particular buildings, I believe, we had looked at the most likely to remain and just be upgraded, so there won't be any impact in the future. So I'm in support of it, I think it's a good cost savings measure, I think it's low impact and ultimately will net, hopefully net the savings we have. One quick question, what, who are we using for a vendor, for the contractor?
So Electrical Wholesalers, which is one of our distributors as well, is providing the labor and material for this project.
Okay, alright.
National Grid has 20 contractors.
And they've been successful in other similar projects for school buildings, other commercial facilities?
Right, they actually do work in, hi Luke, by the way, in your, in Warwick, they're doing work in Warwick, they've done One Socket, they've done Bristol Warren, so they've got a big track record with us, they've probably done 50 schools for me in the last two years, so very happy with them and the results that they've given us.
Jerry, what happens if we don't realize for some reason the savings that we anticipate? Because obviously these are based on load calculations throughout the year, what happens if we want to?
It's a question that comes up quite frequently, and first thing is I want to, you know, as we can, I have an energy intern from URI that we can actually monitor this for you on a monthly basis to make sure that your bills are going down. I do want to make sure that this is working. The nice thing about lighting is it's pretty simple to calculate the energy savings, we talked about this with the other folks earlier. You know, we've got the existing wattage versus what we're putting in, so it's a lower wattage. The only two other variables that calculate savings is how many hours they're on and what your electric rate is. Fortunately, being National Grid, I know what you pay for an electric rate, and I figured that out as a percentage of your savings, it seemed very reasonable for the amount of savings that we're looking at. If it was higher than 20% of your electric bill, I would get really suspicious that the numbers were overstated. But that has to work through the National Grid system, we have checks and balances, we have a technical review internally to make sure that the numbers seem reasonable, and again, I've done 150 schools, these numbers look very reasonable to me.
Okay, and the only other thing I would say is you had mentioned an intern might be able to track it, I mean, I would take you up on that offer for next year, if we could get a report back on where we are comparative to what we predicted versus actuals, because it would be, it would just be nice to see, and we could also present that out to our constituents to present the cost savings that were we cooping off this effort. So hopefully, we'll add that to the list, Sarah, of things to gather for next year, but I appreciate your time and support the effort, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian, did you have any questions or comments? You're still on mute. You're still, you need to unmute yourself, Donna.
Yeah, I got it. So I have no questions, and I think anything that's going to save, save us money is a win-win, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pearson, did you have any comments or concerns?
Well, don't forget Dave as well.
No, Dave was first.
I didn't hear Dave say anything.
Hey, James, I love the background. Coventry High School seniors, 2000, that's awesome.
No, Dave did, Dave did comment.
Okay, so, two, two questions. What is the lifespan or MTTF of the lighting we typically install in a project like this?
So National Grid considers the useful life to be 13 years for LEDs, now that's based upon all markets, including hospitals, which run four times as long. You typically get about 100,000 hours in a public school that operates 2,500 hours to maybe 3,000 hours a year, looking at, you know, 20-plus year useful life on this investment, so it's far going to outlive the time that you're paying for it. You'll also get a five-year warranty from the manufacturer on any material, so it's not just a one-year warranty, it's a five-year warranty. If a fixture does fail beyond the first year, which is material and labor warranty, the manufacturer will send you fixtures.
Okay, my second question is around ergonomics, which is an interesting topic for me to bring up, because I don't usually talk about such things. LED lights, in some cases, can be more prone to flicker issues than fluorescence even, especially if they're not set up correctly. The lighting we're installing in this typical installation, do they have the appropriate, I guess it's the ballasts, to ensure that flicker is reduced so we don't cause any headaches or other such health issues with staff and students?
So early-generation LEDs had the flickering that you're talking about, you're more likely to have fluorescence have more of an impact on learning environment. We've standardized on a specific color in public schools, which is 4,000 Kelvin, and we don't have to get too techy, but it's found that students with special needs have the least reaction to this color light. Again, this is used in hundreds of schools across the state, and I'm sure tens of thousands across the country. But we've done a lot of research on the type of lighting that goes into this and works with all what Ron recommended as well, so we're fully compliant with that. You're not going to see the type of flickering that you saw in the early generation.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. So I have a, I fully support this proposal. Thank you for everyone who worked on this, Mr. Drummond for being here. I just had two questions from the materials that we were given, the letter on, the only letter question I had is on the Coventry High School letter, it's actually on both letters, but what does, it says Coventry Depot, what does the D-E-P-O stand for?
That probably is a fact, many years when the customer was, set up in our system, I apologize for that. We can make that say Coventry School Department, if that's what you like, it's...
I don't know, I thought may, I thought maybe it's, it meant something different that I don't know.
I think somebody probably put an "O" instead of department, it said depot, it's a typo.
Alright, so there's one typo too, and I know I'm being persnickety. So on the same letter, there's a, on the second page, instead of email was spelled incorrectly, it says email instead of email, so if you could just correct that too, that'd be great.
Absolutely, we'll send Bennett new copies with the appropriate letters.
Ms. Patnood, can I just jump in and say that? I also forwarded them to, I shared them with Mr. Anderson, so just, you know, any document that we sign, so I'm sure there'll be no issue, these are pretty standard, but I will wait till he gives his feedback, and then if it's approved tonight, I'll make sure I get, you know, feedback from him for the, early next week, I would say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lovis. So are we ready to move on this proposal?
Kathy, I just had one last question, timeframe, what is the timeframe if we were to approve, you know, whenever, are we supposed to be looking at before the start of the school year to complete this effort, the next school year?
That would be my goal, again, we are coordinating with all of our school customers, whether you want to allow us into your buildings or not, the thinking is that's the best time for us to do it, most districts, we're doing a lot of work in, other districts that we've sanitized, we don't want you in the building. I've talked with Jason, I think they're allowing us to come into the buildings. Material is probably four to six-week delivery time, so you're looking at maybe the first of July, a job like this, they can certainly install that in two months' time, as long as we get it.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Murray, I spoke with EW, and having it done before we return, whenever that is, is definitely in the plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So are we ready to motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the LED lighting proposal for Washington Oak Lighting, Coventry High School as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any further questions from the committee? Anything from the public? I don't know, I don't think...
Can I just remind the public that if you want to, if the public wants to make comments, there's a raise your hand feature, if you click on participants, and if you do that, then Mr. Murphy will unmute you and recognize you by the chair. Nobody's raising their hand.
No one's raising their hand, I don't see anything.
Nope.
Okay, all in favor? Could we have a voice vote, please? Roll call.
Kathy Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number four, which is the discussion approval of the Title IX policy, it was our reference number two. I think we can move on the first piece, which is to dispense the second reading of the Title IX policy, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense the second reading of the Title IX policy.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that was pretty quick, I assume it's a 5-0. Is there a motion to actually approve the Title IX policy?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Title IX policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Okay, are there any questions from the committee, or any discussion on this, from any committee member? Anything from the public? I don't think anyone raises.
Nope, there's no hand raised.
See anything? Alright, hold on, I lost my screen. Oh Lord. Alright, hold on, alright. Could we have a vote, a roll vote, please, Donna?
Kathy Patnood. Kathy, can't hear you. I guess you're muted. Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Alright, I'm back, sorry about that. It doesn't take much to get off screen, and so I was trying to find my screen again, so thank you, the motion carries five to zero. Moving on to...
Kathy, how did you vote?
I voted yes.
Okay, there you go.
I read your last.
Now it's five to zero, okay.
Moving on to number five, which is the F20 budget update, it was our reference number three. And I don't know if you want to start this, Mr. Lovis, and then we can ask Sarah, or I don't know if Sarah wants to take it.
Yeah, I will just start, then I will turn over to Sarah. Because that's, that's who people really want to hear when it comes to the budget, so. We, we're going to present tonight some of the potential savings. I know I've been asked about the expenses, we're still compiling, there's a tally sheet that we're keeping that allows us to submit to FEMA for 75% of our expenses. Our, my concern is that a lot of our expenses, we had ordered a lot of cleaning supplies, a lot of our expenses that are going to be impacted by COVID-19 are going to be, I believe, you know, the starting in the summer and leading up into the fall and whatever reentry looks like. So, we had talked before about looking at purchasing Chromebooks for elementary school for grade three to five, we'll probably bring that back at the next school committee meeting, so that's not an expense right now, we've looked at that, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Mangiurelli. So we're going to present what our potential savings are tonight, and Sarah has a nice report and then in a document, but I think it's important for everybody to understand, you know, we've had some calls today, I know Mr. Florio had some calls, I know an email came in that I shared with me, and I don't want to misrepresent to the town that there may be some potential savings from this budget, but we're not sure, we're not trying to be vague, I'll give you an example, the transportation, you know, we had paid in good faith transportation through March, I found out April 1st that the bus drivers had been laid off. So we're, we're still figuring out what do we have to pay, because our intent was to keep them employed. And again, this has nothing to do with the bus company, they've been very fair to us. However, there's some stipulations with the stimulus funds, and we don't know what those stipulations are, we're not sure what that expense will be to the bus company. So it could be a very significant savings, or we may have to pay out what we had budgeted for a significant part. So when we go through this, and then the other part that Sarah's going to make a point about is how we utilize that money. Because if the town thinks we're just going to use that to offset our request for the FY21 budget, we're going to be in trouble, because any way we look at it, opening a school next year is going to cost us more money. And even if we do multiple scenarios, which I'll talk about in the superintendent report, so we're going to present where we're at with the FY20 budget, I'll turn this over to Sarah, I would ask Mr. Murphy maybe to put up the spreadsheet that we can kind of work off of, and then Sarah did share a report with the council, I mean with the council, I apologize, the school committee, so it's my long-winded way of leading into Sarah.
Okay, so I'm going to actually focus on the narrative that I gave you rather than the spreadsheet. We can go the bottom line that I'm showing right now on the spreadsheet. It's about a million dollars, but in the narrative, I kind of outlined some of the bigger items. The two most significant items are obviously the substitute savings as well as the transportation savings. And as Mr. Lovis said, and I actually had a call with the Business Managers Association and the Finance Director from RIDE, and the language around the federal stimulus money is that to every extent possible, we should be paying our employees and vendors. However, RIDE also said that we should not be paying for services that we're not receiving. So they're just being very gray around it, we've documented our reasons as to why we haven't paid, and we've put that in for savings right now, because we did need to present that. But I would caution that we don't know exactly how that's going to land, and we certainly don't want to lose the stimulus money if that, if that was the ultimate result. So I would hate to bank on the fact that that could be a definite surplus. Some of the other items, you know, we haven't seen the electric bill, I was working on this yesterday and Monday, and at that point in time, the direct energy usage for electricity wasn't online yet, so I couldn't confirm that. Some of the other items, we would expect to see decreased classroom supply, we have seen an increase in custodial supplies, but I think we'll still net a savings in those supply areas. One of the areas that I do want to highlight is that it's a little bit misleading. The outer transportation, we were slightly to go over budget on that, so the budget to actual savings is looking like it's less, because I'm comparing it to budget versus what we've actually spent to date, rather than what we could have potentially spent had we continued transporting out of district the entire time. One of the other areas that's decreasing this surplus is that our out-of-district tuition were higher after the budget fiasco last year, we had said that we saw, just to Exeter, West Greenwich alone, I think we had a pickup of nine students that went out of district. of nine students that went out of district. So some of those items are artificially lowering this surplus that I'm projecting at the end. The other item that's not in here is any insurance proceeds from the ransomware. So I wanted to be clear that that is still not resolved, that we could still see some revenue cut back from that, that would increase that surplus. And while we look like we're going to end this year, we do want to keep in mind that for next year, we're looking at budget impacts from everything, from our, how we're transporting kids, to our physical layout within our buildings, to how we're gonna clean them, to how we're gonna staff. So I know I've said this to the council, but I would strongly advise against taking your surplus and filling it in the budget hole without knowing what the requirements will be to open school. Maybe once we know what the requirements will be, we'll have a better handle on what our FY-21 budget could look like, but at this point in time, I would be really hesitant. The other issue that came up today, when I was on the Riasbo call, we're talking a lot about the federal aid that's coming through, but nobody's really saying anything about state aid right now. And with the stimulus money under the American Reinvestment Recovery Act, they can't sweep the stimulus money, because it is targeted to LEAs. Even this, the CARES Act money, 90% is supposed to go to schools, directly to the LEAs. But what the state did is they cut state aid and essentially forced us to backfill the reduction of state aid. Now, we're already seeing a pretty good cut in state aid, so I would like to think that it doesn't go down lower. But in the conversation that we had today, RIDE was very careful about dancing around any of the revenues that are coming in. They were careful when asked about categorical funds, they were careful about asking, when asked about the SRO money that is out there. And when they came in a state aid, it was, they were hesitant to make a commitment. So I'm not so convinced that we're not gonna see any further fallout from our revenue side as well. But I know that this was asked, and I did want to share, and I'll answer any questions that we have, but this is my best guess at this point in time where I think we'll end the year. Oh, I do want to add too, we are working with school lunch, because that was projected to be a huge deficit. We've had several conversations with Sedexo, trying to get a handle on how they're really handling all of this internally, and what savings will be passed through to the district on that respect as well. But any savings that we have this year, we also do need to cover that school lunch deficit as well.
So that's it. Okay, thank you, Sarah. Thank you again for this really great report. Everything was clearly identified as well as can be expected, given the times we're in. So I will turn it back over to the school committee to ask any questions, have any comments. Dave, Dave, Mr. Florio, do you have any questions for Sarah or Mr. Lewis?
So Sarah, we are expecting approximately $1,089,000 as a, as a savings this year?
Yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Lewis, what are your plans to do with that $1 million?
Well, so let me be clear, though, we're not, you know, right now, but if we have to pay the transportation bill, correct me if I'm wrong, that will reduce that significantly, right? So like, let's be clear that these are potential savings. I don't want to say that we're gonna save a million dollars, and we don't know what other expenses we may have. We just got an email, myself and Mr. Wilson, about extended school year. And now, you know, we don't know what we're gonna do in the fall, but RIDE wants us to maybe have some in-person. We don't know what that'll be, even though I know that's in next year's budget, but we may have to expend funds now to prepare for that. Because if we're gonna have students, and I'm not saying we are, we have to talk about this, we just got the document today, but if we have to have students come in and meet with teachers, if that's even possible, we're gonna have to do some major planning and probably purchase, you know, a significant amount of PPE, or, you know, we don't know. And that's what I just want to be clear, because I know there are people out there thinking, a million dollars, we're gonna use that, and that million dollars could be $200,000 in a month. Easy, as I say, it may not be, but we need to be clear about that. And that's, that's being honest about this. So, yes, it looks good, but if we have to pay transportation, that's cut in half, probably. And then, so let's just be cautious with this, but we'll be as transparent as we can be about what the actual savings are.
And that's, excuse me, Sarah, that's why I'm glad, Sarah, you spoke on this, spoke on that matter this evening, and Mr. Lewis did as well, because these are the questions that the council is asking. They're asking these questions, including, including a state senator. And we have to, if they're asking questions, we have to have the answers. And that's what I needed. I needed, I needed to answer their questions, and I needed you to answer their questions, because you're better, you're absolutely, I'm not a financial person. I'm a treatment person, but I'm not a financial person. And, Mr. Lewis, you're the superintendent, and I don't want to be superintendent, never did, never want to, good luck to you. But the point is, that these are the, these are the questions, and I'm glad whoever spoke to you, Sarah, spoke to you true, because that, these are the questions that I'm being asked. I don't know about my fellow, fellow school committee members, but these are the questions that are annoying them, that they don't understand, and they don't, they have no idea what this money is going to be spent on. And that's what has to be impressed upon them, that if they're going to give us more money, we have to explain what we're doing with the excess. And we have to do it eloquently, and the two of you are the best, best speakers of that issue that I know of. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I can just add too, I think one of the best approaches that we should take, unfortunately, you know, we know the council's voting on the contract tomorrow, hopefully, and then Monday on our budget for FY-21. But what I actually would do as a recommendation to move forward would be, as we identify known buckets of costs for next year, we have within the GASMIA requirements a way to quote-unquote "airmark" funds by, either I can assign them as the Finance Director, or we can bring them forward and have the school committee actually commit those funds for certain topics. So let's say we get guidance on what compensatory time we need to offer, and we can work with special education to get a dollar amount. I would actually recommend that we bring forward that dollar amount to you, and have you take a formal vote to commit that money for compensatory time, you know, to fill the gap. It's, I don't want to say it's semantics, but it's a, it's a way of financially carving out and identifying what money you know you will be spending next year in certain areas when there's a reserve. So I think that that would be the clearest way, so that everybody has an understanding. Unfortunately, we just don't have that information yet.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Mr. Murray, any questions?
Next to the presentation, Sarah. It answers some questions I had, and I know that Mr. Pearson had brought it up. One of the last meetings about what I'm adding in savings, potentially, right? I had a discussion on this today, and I think the way I explained it, well, first off, I think it's good to put it in relative terms. $1 million out of a $73 million budget is 1.3% total. So that is a very small fragment. Now, if we had a $10 million budget, that would be a large fragment of that budget. $1 million in context, somebody may say, wow, that's a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but in context, it's not. And so we can easily blow through that with some of the pending things that we're looking at with the COVID crisis that we're gonna have to address. You mentioned busing, class sizes, cleaning, et cetera. We know that. I think a frustrating thing as a taxpayer is the unknown. I feel confident as a school committee member, if I felt the budget was padded over the past years, I would say that we might be able to offer something up out of this. But based on what I've seen, we operate on a pretty thin line. So if we don't have flexibility, we have no other place to go. So as I explained to somebody today, if council's willing to tell me that come fall, if they cut us now, and they have, with a commitment that they come fall, all these expenses come back to bite us, that they'll appropriate additional funds, that's fine. But the truth is, we won't have the ability to do that. And so we have to build in a little bit of flexibility, and I compare it to somebody spending all of their money and just budgeting to the max, but the roof caves in. Well, then what? You have to keep some money in reserve. We don't typically do that in our budget, to the point of, I mentioned, capital. We have no reserve, we have, we're not even meeting the appropriation for capital per state law. We have no extra money. So what is the worst-case scenario? Well, we either scoop that money, council scoops that money, and we go without. And then if these expenses come back, where do we get the money? It either has to come through taxes or a cut. What do we cut? If we get to next year, so if we do pad the budget a little bit, and I say pad, because it may not be, it may run. I'm sure. But if we get to the end of next year, and we act, well, that's money we can finally have the state requirement, we're not operating well into the black on. So I just would, that's gonna be sort of the talk going forward with council. It's, the inclination is going to be by both the public and council to scoop that money right now, because the inclination is to go to zero. But that is a very dangerous prospect, and I don't know where we come up with the money, because everyone just assumes we have this extra pot of gold to pay for additional expenses. If the federal government decides to come out with another support plan for education, then that might be a pot, but we don't know. But what's the worst-case scenario? We have a little bit of extra money, which we normally don't have at the end of the year, but I think we're much safer erring on the side of caution. So I know this is preaching to the choir here, but I think that's something that the council needs to constantly hear, because if we do not explain it well, and we don't explain it, even if it goes to the public vote, we're gonna probably run short, or we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions moving forward if the state mandates certain things. So I'll probably have additional questions once I dig a little bit further, but I think at this point, it's all prospective savings too. So we have to iterate that, we're not actually sure. So before we go reallocating this money, we need to actually figure out what our full expenses are coming out of this. So, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian?
All right. Forgive me if you said this, but I just wanted, does this budget take into account the savings from the contract?
No, so any, the CTA contract, any savings for the CTA contract would be in FY-21. So this is just how I think we're gonna end this fiscal year.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Pearson?
First, for everyone's information, Town Council is not voting on the budget on Monday, it appears. If you look at the agenda they've set for tomorrow night, they are readjusting the budget calendar, and, oops, sorry, I'm shaking a noise thing here, readjusting the budget calendar and pushing out the dates of the vote till, I don't know, looks like we're not gonna have a budget till end of June. So everyone, please look at that agenda, so you can understand the Town Council is not voting on the budget Monday, it appears, unless, unless the president doesn't get his way. The only other comment I have with this, well, two comments. First, thank you for putting this together, appreciate it. Second part of this, I have asked for this over email, but I'm still gonna ask for it till I see it, and we'll probably need a running report on this. Interested in understanding the expenses we're submitting for, for the COVID-19 reimbursement. So if we could get, get an ongoing kind of report of that, just so we understand, you know, what we're talking about. Also, I do have a question around that. Craig, you had mentioned submitting the list to FEMA. Are we submitting that list to FEMA? Are we working with the town? What is the process for submitting the reimbursement for the expenses?
Yeah, I mean, Sarah can, yeah, Sarah can explain if I, if I don't explain it correctly, but, so we're, we're working with the town, we have the document, a running document. You know, honestly, Jason and Sarah have been keeping it up to date. We don't have, the idea is what's reimbursable, we thought maybe Chromebooks were, then we were told they weren't. That we, what we will get, if they determine they're reimbursable, will be about 75%. There isn't a lot, I know you had asked for, for the document, and we can share that document, it's not secret. But right now, we don't have a lot of major expenses on it. So it's insignificant, but that doesn't mean that we haven't gone out and purchased all the supplies that we may need to purchase. For instance, right now, our buildings are empty, but we really need to figure out how we're gonna get the hand sanitizer in every single classroom and keep that. You know, we're gonna need more PP. Right now, everybody's bringing, you know, pretty much supplying their own. So these are decisions we can make over the next couple of weeks, put those on the list. And then we can definitely share that list with you. Again, I could be wrong. Sarah may contradict what I'm gonna say, but I think most of our expenses, unless we come up with some major expenses that we need to purchase in the next month or so, will be into, I believe, FY-21, when we really start thinking about bringing people back, or what school's gonna look like. You know, but we may end up ordering, so we could order materials now, but probably not even receive them till FY-21. So, I know, Sarah, if you want to add to that, Mr. Pearson?
We, we maintain a Google Doc that I've shared with the town, that's the FEMA tablet. So most, and just looking at this quickly, I was pulling it up, most of what we have on there, outside of cleaning supplies, are really items that we needed in order to get together packets for students to send home. So a lot of printing, postage, paper, some adapters, some scanners, some additional laptops for everybody to be able to continue working remotely from home and accessing all the software. Some software isn't handled by the Chromebooks. So there's also a portion of salary for the physical plant department with some of the cleaning, as well as the, some of the emergency meetings that have been held, you know, just keeping the superintendent and director of facilities up to date. That's really the extent of it. I can say that on the business manager meetings, there's a lot of back and forth between FEMA's going to cover this, and then people say, oh, no, 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 that's gonna be the CARES Act. So everybody's kind of pointing fingers at each other for things that are gonna come in. It seems like the FEMA money is gonna be more directed at the town. This is the general consensus that I've heard, at least through the business managers, and that the CARES Act is really fair, we're gonna get more of our funding from. So that, that will be determined. I know that some communities have had their workbooks kicked back. I asked John Arnett about that, he hasn't had any issues. I think there were some that were really trying to be aggressive and putting in things like loss of revenue and whatnot, and those seem to be getting kicked back, rather than truly just listing out additional purchases. So I would say that we have been documenting anything that we normally wouldn't be purchasing, but we haven't been aggressive from a perspective of putting loss of revenue and things like that on the spreadsheet. As far as the pre-purchasing of items, I do know that several school districts have started purchasing things like masks. I know that there have been some that have signed up with 3D printer companies to start printing face shields for them. The hard thing is, nobody really knows what to start spending money on, because it's something that, okay, so a school could provide masks for every student, but then is that a concern if they all look identical and one student puts an identical mask down? So these are some of the questions that are, that are going on. I would expect the need to make some purchases before July 1st, just because everything is taking so long to arrive, that I think it would be in our best interest, once we have some guidance, to start making some purchases in advance, and then maybe we would get reimbursed on this. But the lift is truly not significant from what we've had to spend out of pocket so far on this.
And we can share that, we'll share that document. I, I, there's no, you know, we can definitely share that with the committee, it's not a secret, and we'll definitely do that after this meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis, thank you, Sarah. My only final comments is, are any, any rev- My only final comments is, are any, any revenue that is gleaned from this year's budget, anything that comes to us from COVID expenses, from FEMA, from the federal government, those are all stopgap measures that if you use those to shore up your future budget in 21. And I know, Sarah, you've made this comment and raised this issue, but I, I have to reiterate it. If we literally get zero funding from the town with the expectation that we're going to do just fine because we get FEMA money or we have some revenues left from this year that we can plug those holes, in the end, we'll be in worse shape than if we didn't get any money at all because the infrastructure structural deficit will just continue. And we'll be in the same predicament we've been in the last couple of years trying to catch up from those years where we were part of the funding, funding formula, communities that gained money from the state. And then we were level funded by our, our, our town. So when, when that happens and you don't have tax revenue already built into your budget, then you know what happens? We fall off a cliff. So you get by just barely, but then the next year it's worse, the year after that it's worse. It, it, it just doesn't help it unless it's actually backed up by tax revenue that comes from the taxpayer. So what I'm really going to say on that matter, and I hope that the town council understands it. I think they do. And I'm, I'm certainly sure the budget director on the town council side and our town manager understands that. Okay, before we move on, were there any comments from any of the citizens gathered? Oh, I see Mr. Florio with a hand up. Mr. Florio.
Madam Chair, I just want to say, this was a great conversation. And this is, I currently, this has been a huge issue with certain people in our town. And they need answers. And I'm so glad you were able to give some answers at least to the questions that they had and particularly the council members. So I'm very hopeful they're listening this evening. I thought they were going to have you, Mr. Levis, and you, Ms. McNerely in their executive session to explain this apparent idea that they had. I know I had difficulty explaining it. I'm not a financial person. But I'm extremely proud that both of you are working in exemplary manner to show the council that there is no pot of gold at the end of, at the end of the rainbow here. It's all pain. No matter what we do, it's all pain. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for, for allowing me to speak. Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing this, for allowing this discussion this evening.
You're welcome. I don't see any hands raised. Were there any final thoughts from Mr. Levis? We're all set. All right, then I guess we can move on to number six, which is the PBGR modifications due to COVID-19. It's our reference number four. I'm not sure who was going to take this.
I'll just open up. I know Ms. Maycomber is here. I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy if you can put on the reference. It's, it's a brief reference, but because of the scenario, obviously, that took place, we have to look at our, and the high school's done a great job working with their leadership team, the administration. And so these are some of the modifications. So I'd like to ask Ms. Maycomber, if you don't mind explaining it, then if the committee has any questions of the public. I believe we have to vote on these because I believe the proficiency-based graduation requirements were adopted by the school committee presented. Anyways, I'll turn it over to Ms. Maycomber.
Yeah, so we had to, we waited to hear from RIDE and they, they did say that we still had to complete our graduation presentations that we had, that we were going to be doing. So we did some modifications just on the fact that kids didn't have the opportunity to finish their requirement. For example, some kids have them on the job shadow yet. So we gave that LE4 because they didn't have the opportunity to get, and there were all these businesses closed, so there was really no opportunity for them to get that done. So in their presentations that they did, they discussed jobs that they were, a career that they might want to go into and how they're prepared for it. And they did a little research on some careers, but they weren't required to do the job shadows. So that was one thing that we waived. Also, because during distance learning, we did not assign CCAs for the, since March 13th. Some kids didn't have the opportunity to get the last CCA that they might need or they may have needed a couple and they didn't have that opportunity. So we allowed them to use what they currently had. In terms of our digital portfolio, again, we had to waive some of it because like LE4, for example, they wouldn't have been able to finish if their job shadow wasn't done. Perhaps they were waiting on some of the CCAs as well. So we pretty much took what they had already done to this point. We knew that we were in pretty good shape. We had done a list of kids who needed some ramp up for certain courses. And we had about 20 kids and it was only in probably one or at most two different classes. So we knew we were in pretty decent shape there. And then for the presentations, kids have to present and do a practice presentation in their advisories. And the advisor signs off that they did it. It was, it was good enough to send down to the PBGR office to schedule for a presentation. So if students had presented in their advisories, we waived them and passed them. And anyone else who hadn't, which were 72 students, we had them last Friday. They presented their Google Leo presentations to a panel of teachers through Google meets. And out of that group, 59 of them presented. We still have 18 left to present. Some of those are AP students and because they were in AP, like they were starting AP testing, we did extend it for them so they can do it when their AP testing is done. And I also didn't have AP teachers scheduled to score because they were so busy getting the kids ready. So the AP teachers will be scoring those presentations as soon as the testing wraps up. So that's kind of where we're at. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm going to send that back to school committee first. Dave, did you have anything to ask?
No questions.
Or Craig?
No, ma'am.
You're good?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Mr. Murray.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Mrs. Colonian?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, Brooke. I think you guys did a great job given the circumstances. I think we have enough leeway to allow the students that can do it some timing in there, which kind of makes a lot of sense given the circumstances. That being said, is there a motion to approve the modifications as presented for the PBGR? Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to make, make, to accept the class of 2020? P? P?
PBGR.
Modifications.
I second the motion.
Could we have a vote, roll call vote? Donna?
Kathy Patnood?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you to all that made that possible. And I want to thank all the teachers and students involved that did complete this, this part of their graduation requirements. Moving on to number seven, which is the 2019, 2020 school calendar update. I think that was part of our packet as well. Number five, I believe. Mr. Levis, did you want to comment about the calendar?
Sure, I don't know. I, I, I did, thank you. So the calendar that, I don't know if we need to put on the screen. It's been shared with our entire school community. So we have agreed, the superintendents have agreed to adopt rights as they put forward, you know, as we entered this COVID-19, to adopt their calendar. So an example is this coming, the, the, the last few weeks are basically four day weeks to the end of the year. Tomorrow is a vacation day. Hopefully, nobody will be working from Coventry Public Schools. And then every week you'll see in May and in June, there's a, there's a day off. We also had, our, our last school day was tentatively on the 15th of, a Monday of June. And I had asked because our teachers and our staff, you know, allegedly in April vacation in March, but people worked there, you know, continuously through that time to be prepared. You know, there were, there were school communities where, you know, people weren't going to work to get ready for the following week when we came back and started this distance learning. There was a, a community not far from us where people said, we'll come in, but we want to get paid. And, and, you know, to the credit of our, our, our staff across the board, they came in. So I asked RIDE if they would make our last day. I know it seems like a, a little deal, but to make our last day on Friday, the June 12th. So that'll be our last official day of, of, of school. So that's the calendar I'm presenting. Because it's a change to the calendar that was published, I would ask if, you know, obviously if there's any questions. And then I would ask the committee to vote on just accepting the calendar as revised calendar is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Before we go to a motion, are there any questions from the committee? Mr. Florio?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Murray?
No questions. Mr. Levis was good enough to answer the questions offline. Thank you.
Mrs. Colonian?
No questions at this time.
And James?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. Is there a motion to approve the calendar, the revised calendar?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the revised calendar for the school year 2020.
I second the motion.
And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathy Patnood?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Five to zero. Oh, I should have asked if there were any hands up. Sorry about that. I, I don't think anybody had any hands up. Okay, moving on to number eight, fiscal '21 budget update. Do you want to start this, Mr. Levis, and turn it over to Sarah?
Yeah, I think if Mr. Murphy can put up, there's a, a sheet that has dollar amounts on it. If we could start with that, but so we're going to present the budget that's pre-COVID-19. And I think that's important because, you know, again, the conversation we had previously about savings and any conversation that, that I've had with other superintendents, with the Department of Education, the governor's office, and with other states. I had a conversation today with someone that works with New Mexico, is working with New Hampshire around planning for reentry. They're looking at, there's, there are no scenarios where it's going to cost us less money. You know, there's a lot of ideas out there about, you know, what we could do and what we could cut. But the reality is, I'm not hearing any ideas out there that are going to allow us to get into next year. And as the president said today, you need schools open. And our, and our governor said that we need at least elementary students have the opportunity to go to school, to get people to, to go to work. So we have to fight for the budget that we have going forward because that's going to be a baseline. And, you know, we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, after Sarah goes over the numbers, I'll talk a little bit about cuts that were made from a position perspective. Some of them were through negotiations. Some of them are looking at some tough decisions around programs. And others are based on one-year leaves. We had long-term, you know, long-term people in for leave. People are coming back from leaves and on population and numbers. But we believe going into the school year next year, if we're going to operate the way that we're being told in terms of, you know, including some form of social distancing, smaller class size, we're going to need more custodians. Today, we heard that they have drones that can go through and spray and disinfect. These drones cost tens of thousand, you know, like a significant amount of money that we couldn't. And we're still going to need all of our custodians. Drones aren't going to wash desks. They're not going to do door tams, clean bathrooms. So there's no way around that. If we're to open school in the fall, we need to think about, in, in addition to the budget we're putting forward, what are those additional expenses going to be? So tonight, we're presenting the budget with the cuts that were pre-COVID-19. So I'll turn it over to Sarah to talk about the, the, the numbers to the budget of FY 21. And then I'll talk about some of the positions and programmatical changes that we're making.
So I think the first chunk of this had been presented the other night in the slide or the PowerPoint presentation. Really what was missing was where we were pulling some of that other $200,000 out of the individual line items. So to be clear, when we started the budget process, met with all the principals and kind of went through areas that we thought we could will down lines because there's really truly no big ticket item that we can just pull out. So a lot of this had been done pre-COVID. What I would anticipate happening and what we usually do is, once we have an idea of where the budget's going to be, I think it's best to send the budget back out to the principals so that they can go back through, not changing the bottom line, but shifting to properly allocate the resources where they, they see fit now or once we have the parameters of what the ultimate budget will be. But as you see, the biggest reductions are from salaries and benefits. We have the CTA contact, we have the retirements. Again, these are estimates because even the retirements are based on an assumption that we're going to hire at a certain step and level. So if those come in lower, there might be additional savings there depending on what the ultimate hiring is. And then the staff reduction. Again, the staff reductions were truly by looking at class enrollment and as Mr. Levis said, making some program decisions. So the rest of the items are really kind, I don't want to, well, small, truly going through the, through the budget and kind of seeing where we can pull out a thousand here, a thousand there. The biggest one would be the out of district special ed tuition. This is like a gamble, putting something like this in here because we never know when it's going to change. But we do have some students that are aging out or are returning to districts. So we, we know that those are going to be the true six. And who knows what could happen once we get into the school year. But this is kind of where we're looking at. We are still looking at all vendors and contracts to see if we can tweak and pull out savings. And then the other potential item is, once we issue the thing for the Chromebook lease, to see what financing rates come back and if there will be any savings in that area.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So are there any questions from Sarah from the committee? I'll start with Mr. Florio.
No, Madam Chair.
You're good? Okay. Mr. Murray, did you have any questions?
Nothing at this time specifically. The only, the only comment I'll make is, and I, and I made a lot of my comments earlier, so I'll just make one last point. It's likely that we're probably going to get the question, well, probably two questions. One is, what is your absolute bare minimum?
One is, what is your absolute bare minimum to operate on? And in my personal feeling, I think it's what's presented. But the other thing we typically get is, you know, what's the impact of a potential cut? And lay that out for us. And I know we had to get into it last year again. I'm hoping that we, this is my personal opinion, we stay united and we don't go down that road because while it's, the, the issue is, we all know the easy cuts that are likely there and where we'll be fear-mongering, fear-mongering, mongering. And once again, you know, we'll be seen as sort of putting cuts out there that may not happen, I guess. So I really don't want to go down that road this year. As I said before, you know, I think Sarah's done a great job with the math. I think it's a budget that we've said we need. If, you know, the powers above us choose to cut, then, then we'll make the necessary cuts. They don't get to chip pick and choose, and they don't get to have a menu beforehand because that's, that's what's been irritating in the past is we have to start searching. But as, as we always say, it's very difficult at this time of year to figure out where programming, staffing, and where we're going to fall. To that end, we're likely to also hear, what about things like sports come fall and potential savings on that? And I, again, don't think we can even postulate on that because we just don't know. And that's not a great answer for the public because they love to know, but we don't know. We don't know if sports are going to ramp up again. We don't know if certain programs will come again, but we just don't know. And until fiscal year '22 comes up, there'll be a lot of rectification of where budgets are, but I think right now we've got to err on the side of caution. So I'm just hoping, again, going back to that sort of menu item list that they're likely going to want. I know for myself, I don't want to go down that road. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Pearson, any questions, comments?
No, thank you for putting this together. No further questions at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So can we go to the second sheet? I didn't want to jump in because Sarah questioned, but there's two parts to this. So I think the second one that is the FY'21 positions. So, you know, one of the things Mr. Murray brought up about the cuts and, you know, like last year was a horrific year, horrific year. You know, I can only speak for myself, but you know, this year's been, you know, I would call these times horrific right now, you know, a little different than last year. I can, you know, I don't know about you, but you know, I find myself, especially this last week, I'm running into a wall almost every day. You know, I found that, that just, that's just in life. You know, my job, I find, you know, for me, my job is, is very challenging. You know, this, this COVID-19 has made it unbelievably challenging. But the worst part of the job that I, that I have is, you know, we're going to talk about positions now, but then we get into people, right? And, and there's nothing I say that makes it any better, so I get that. But we made some tough decisions. I wanted you to know that when we make these decisions around positions, they're collaborative. You know, I will own them at the end of the day, but I, I, we've worked hard. Our administration, central office, work hard to work with our building principals, our, our directors. I think we work hard with, with our, our teacher leaders, our union presidents to try to be fair and as transparent. But the end of the day, we have to make some tough decisions. So I'd like to kind of jump into the position cuts due to enrollment. And so we've increased class size. You know, we know the middle school's pretty much maxed. And so when people say we haven't made cuts, you know, maybe there, but we have, but it's, there's, our, our class sizes are maxed. And we continue to do that. The high school increased the minimum amounts for electives this year. So we, you know, we went through that and looked at eliminating. You'll also see in the elementary school, we made some tough decisions in cutting program, cutting classrooms where we may have to add those back. And I think we're fluid. We try to do that, but we also needed to come up with a number. You know, and, and back to your question, Mr. Murray, about, like I said, last year, I feel we need to stand strong with this. I don't know where we'd make other cuts, knowing that, you know, we're going to have a responsibility to try to open schools next year. And I do believe it's going to be an increase in staffing, and there's a lot of ideas and people throw out a lot of suggestions about you could cut this and cut that. But I'm not that, that sure. You know, I think we may even have a hybrid where some kids in the same grade may be home because elementary parents don't want their kids coming to school. There's a lot of fear, and some students may be in school. We don't have a lot of time to plan that. So my, we need to put forward, I believe, the budget that we have and then figure out how are we going to fund the additional expenses next year? And that, those are not included in this budget. Let's be clear about that. Any additional costs that we may have. I threw out a number the other day, working on, you know, just custodians to meet the, what I believe the requirements are going to be. And it's in the high, you know, significant hundreds of thousands of dollars addition. So none of this is in this budget. So let me just go through the, the positions and then I'll answer any questions. So again, this is based on enrollment. 1.3 FTE, social studies cut, 1.5 science cut, 1.8 math cut. We made a tough decision in the next item in terms of 1.4 FTE that we, you know, we've had this conversation before, and this is not, you know, we have an outstanding, amazing French teacher that's done a phenomenal job and brought students to France, brought, you know, students from France here. When we look at the numbers, and this came up a couple of years ago when we cut in AP, and yet it got before the, you know, the, the school committee, and, and we ended up putting it back on. But we have to make a decision, and we made a tough decision that we're going to cut. You know, we're going to have, you know, French III and French IV finish out, but we're going to, you know, stop the feeder system because we, we see the numbers are smaller, continue to be small. And, and another part is we have to make decisions about how are we going to really, if we're serious about foreign language, how are we going to bring it down to our middle school with, with a greater emphasis and also at our elementary school? We're also cutting, the other portion of this is our Spanish. We're cutting 1.2 FTE, tech ed. Last year was a 1.0 unfilled position. Another tough decision is carpentry. You know, I get lots of suggestions. We've talked about CTE, LART, but last year we reduced it to a 1.4. We have a, you know, a one-year-only position in there, but we have to make some tough decisions. Our numbers are still low, and we, we've decided that we're going to, to make that cut to that program. Criminal justice, again, these are enrollment. Education studies, we had someone retire, but we've cut that from a 1.8 to a 1.4. And then we were able, based on numbers, to cut a 1.0 FTE, special ed. We're cutting at Black Rock, and this is all figured into the budget. A grade one cut, and Mr. Coward's on, he can talk about this. These were not easy cuts. We may end up having to put, you know, enrollment is, is fluid. We may have to put some of these back. Hopkins Hill, a 1.0 FTE kindergarten cut and a 1.0 FTE grade one cut. And I, and I need to stop and apologize because I had asked Mr. Coward for the enrollment numbers. I will share them with you afterwards, and I'll make sure we bring them back at the next school committee meeting, but I did not send those out. And then we also, through contract negotiations, we have eliminated 1.5 of a professional development coordinator. Again, that's if the contract goes through. And 1.5 of a pre-K itinerary and special education. And, and I just want to say that all these conversations, our administrators and, and the teacher leadership are wanting to know, they advocate very strongly for their, their staff continuously. And what we're trying to do is make some tough decisions and cuts while we still continue to move forward. And I know that can get into very subjective opinions. But when I first got here, and again, nothing in the past, but there's a lot of conversations, a lot of tough talk about things, but not a lot of actions at times. So we take a long time. We started these conversations around staffing probably January, December, January, and it's taken us a long time. And, and, you know, we try to be purposeful and thoughtful, and, and you may think we wait to the last minute, but I, but I've had numerous conversations, repeat conversations. I know Mr. Coward and I just had a, a conversation about the elementary just as, you know, as early as the beginning of this week. So we, we try to be purposeful and try to be thoughtful. And again, we're talking about positions now. The next part is when we get into layoffs. That's where it gets into people, and that's, that's, that's the challenging part of this, and I understand. So I will open it up to any questions, Madam Chair, from, from the school committee and then from the community.
Yeah, I have, I have nothing for you right now. Mr. Florio, did you have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
No comments, Madam Chair. I just, I just can't believe in layoffs at still.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Mrs. Colonian?
No questions.
Okay, and Mr. Pearson?
No questions at this time?
Is there anything from the public? If Mr. Murphy could check on our hand raising?
Mrs. Erinakis has her hand up.
Hi, so I, I've had this conversation with Mr. Levis. I just feel when he could say it publicly. One of my major concerns is the elementary classroom cuts. And Mr. Levis explained how if enrollment goes higher above and beyond contractual limits, you may have to add back staff. I understand that. As a high school teacher, I actually have no, you know, vested interest in this, but I just want to make sure that we're looking at those numbers because grades K1 and 2 are the foundational building blocks for the child's education. And by cutting a classroom so you can maximize class size and jam pack it to what the contract allows is definitely not in the best interest, not only while those students are in grades K1 and 2, but as they progress through. So whenever I see that we're eliminating classrooms so we can go to the class size maximums at that young of an age, it's, it's philosophically and educationally unsound. I know Mr. Levis doesn't agree with it. I know the school committee may not agree with it as well. But if that's the case, then I ask that we do something about it because that is the worst thing we can do for students who are going to need the most help as they progress through school.
Thank you for those comments, Mrs. Erinakis. Were there any other comments from our questions? I don't see any other hand raises. Does anybody else?
No.
I think so. So that being said, I guess we can move on to the.
Madam Chair, can I just, sorry, can I ask a question? So, Mr. Levis, can you just explain the process to, to respond to Mr. Erinakis's comment of determining how you came up with the, the teachers? I mean, I'm assuming it was based on class size, but you, obviously, that has to be weighted against some, if you're trying to make a reduction, you have to make it somewhere, correct?
Right, and I, and I don't disagree with what, you know, she and I have these conversations all along. But at the end of the day, we have to make some cuts. And, and Mr. Coward and I, you know, and, and again, I'm referring to Mr. Coward because he works very closely with the elementary principals. At this point, we need to, we need to make some cuts, but we also know that if we have move-ins, you know, there's, these are challenging, you know, like I have no idea how registration. Typically, we have, we have low registration this year. We've had low registration in kindergarten, low registration in some of the other areas, but that could change overnight. So I, I know the concern is if we lay people off and good people, we saw this last year, we lost a lot of good people that were scooped up by other districts. We do an incredible job. Our staff are amazing. When I talk to other colleagues about the, you know, this distance learning that was thrown at us, we have very few complaints. And anything that we receive, when I shared it, when I've looked into it, it was another side to the story for the most part. So we have incredible people, and we have young teachers come in. We have incredibly skilled veteran teachers that, that bring them in the right way. So the biggest part for me about this is that we potentially lose those teachers. That, to me, is the biggest concern because at the end of the day, I believe we do the right thing. So while I, I agree with Ms. Erinakis, but I, I believe that, you know, these are decisions we have to make right now. And we could have waited a couple more weeks, but in, in, in good faith, what I said to Ms. Erinakis in, in her conversation, we're having the, you know, the next conversation about layoffs tonight to be fair to our educators. You know, we could wait until the 20, you know, our next school committee meeting, but we could have moved it up a bit. So, but we look at the numbers and make some tough decisions. And so I don't disagree with what she's saying, but I believe at the end of the day, we'll make the right decisions about our elementary schools and our class sides.
I just, you know, obviously, these are always tough decisions. I don't like making them. I don't like, you know, I just, and it's difficult as a member because the administration deals with the day-to-day. I have to trust that you're making moves to run the districts appropriately. It's just, it is difficult. It is a fair point to say that maxing out classes at the earlier ages is not preferable, right? We don't want to do that at any age.
Right, but we're also, yeah.
You know.
But we're also, I'm sorry. Saying, we're also adding, like, we, we needed to add a classroom, which I, I didn't go over. We added, add a class, a kindergarten increase at Tyo. And that may happen. We may have, we started a new registration system. That may have incredible registration. The next school committee meeting, we may come back and say we need to put, you know, we have a couple of weeks, we may have increased registration, and it may put us over, and I may have to put some of these back on. That's the reality. That's the other value of doing it now, but I know Mr. Pearson had a question. Maybe I answered it. Maybe I didn't.
Yeah.
No, no question, sorry.
That's okay. So I, I, I'm not going to sit here and say that, you know, these are decisions that we, you know, like to make.
No, I, and I get that. I'm not criticizing, but I just, I feel it's appropriate to respond to the comment. I understand that these are never easy decisions. My preference would be to have lower class sizes and appropriately be funded. That is always my preference, right? And I think it's your preference, it's all our preference, right? These are the decisions, this is why it comes to this level. They're not easy decisions, so.
And, and I just want to be clear too, that this is a pre-COVID-19 budget. I'm very concerned about being in a position where we can open schools. And, you know, people can say, oh, if we get level funded, we're going to do massive cuts. Where? And we, we went through that last year. I'm not going through that again. I've stated that, you know. Obviously, I'm not trying to be insubordinate and disrespectful, but, you know, we, we were very clear about what the potential of, of the budget being shut down last year. And nobody was marching on town council in Warwick, they marched. So lessons learned for me is that we have to be as transparent, as open and honest. I mean, early, I'm hearing everybody else is getting these questions around, you know, savings, but no one's reached out to me, and I'm the superintendent. You would think at least I might be somebody that people would reach out to. So, you know, I, I'll take the hit here, you know, we're trying to do the best we can. We're in conversation, like I said, Sarah Nekis and I have had many conversations about this. I appreciate you bringing that forward, but, you know, it's, it's sometimes a lesser of two evils too, you know? But we will make sure we do the right thing. If enrollment goes up, we'll be back before you. We've done that in the past.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully, I'm fully confident that, you know, if, if we need extra classrooms, that'll happen. I'm also pretty cognizant of the fact that if, if we do not, if we start July 1 with our old budget, we will have missed the deadline, the state deadline that says we can lay off any further teaches. So we pretty much, this is a pre-COVID budget. These were layoffs that would have met, would have happened, you know, regardless of the circumstances we find ourselves in. And quite honestly, the town council, unless state law changes, the layoffs we're doing tonight will be the only layoffs that we'll really be able to, to do with our certified staff. That being said, at least I think that's true. I don't know if, if Mr. Levis wants to correct me on that.
No, I mean, we, we have other opportunities, but I think we've been clear. And I, and that's what I've asked, you know, in my conversation with committee members. I mean, we need to, you know, this is the budget we think we need. And I think this is the budget, I know this is the budget we need to build off of if we're to open schools in the fall. we're to open schools in the fall. And because everything that I'm hearing, unless somebody's hearing something differently, it's going to cost us an additional money. I was on a conversation with RIDE, where, with superintendents, where they said, well, you know, maybe the state will, like, give Coventry, you know, this was hypothetical, but maybe Coventry would get another $1 million on top of their budget. And so the conversations were, what if we all got level funded? That would, that $1 million would just, like, you know, not even backfill that hole, and we still wouldn't be able to open schools. So it defeats the whole purpose, right? So I think we need to be clear and consistent. There's a difference between answering somebody's questions and then them not liking the answer. And I believe that's been my experience here. I think we've been very clear, all of us, about what the answers are. But sometimes people just want to hear something different. And so, you know, and that's what I challenge people. Last year, we wrote, you know, we'll give an answer. You may not like it, but it's, it's an honest answer and the best answer we could give. Sarah had drafted a letter, and we invited anybody in the community to come in and meet with us to discuss the budget. Other than some elected officials, nobody took us up on it. So I don't know what more you can do to say, we believe this is the budget we need to build off of. We found where doom and gloom got us. I can't go there. I can't even function if I start thinking about going there. So, you know, we need to get, we need to push this budget, and this needs to be a foundation that we build on so we can open school next year, whatever that looks like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis. Then I think if the committee is ready, I don't see any other hands up from the participants. So if the committee is ready to read motion, I'm here to entertain a motion about the layoffs. Agenda number nine. Is there a motion from anyone?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendations of the superintendent that the following personnel be laid off to the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year be confirmed due to factors identified in individual reference letters, which include, but are not limited to, enrollment reductions, teachers returning from leaves of absence, or returning from job share, possible loss of grants, fiscal constraints, and program changes.
Okay, thank you. We have, just a procedural question. Do we have to read the names, Mr. Levis?
Yeah, yes, I think it's fair to read the names. And it was just, you know, it was asked me before with the changes in regulations, the General Assembly, why we had to do this when a lot of the responsibility was pushed down to the superintendent. But layoffs is not one of those. I believe, you know, it's, layoffs still need to be done publicly and approved by the school committee. So just for clarification, because a lot of other personnel matters are handled by the superintendent, so, but layoffs is not one of those.
All right, thank you.
Kathy, you want me to read the names?
Sure. Thank you.
Lee Birelli, one-year-only, .6 inclusion teacher at Coventry High School. Brianna Butler, one-year-only, .6 science teacher at Coventry High School. Molly O'Keefe, one-year-only, .6 social studies teacher at Coventry High School. Benjamin Streeter, 1.0 Spanish teacher at Coventry High School. Cynthia Texara, one-year-only, 1.2 French teacher at Coventry High School. Nathan Silvaia, one-year-only, .4 Coventry teacher, RCT at Coventry High School. Iwana Andrio Kulu, world language teacher, Feinstein Middle School. Christopher Costa, social, .1 social study, 1.0 social studies teacher, Feinstein Middle School. Sabrina Cimental Maycut, 1.0 English teacher, Feinstein Middle School. Jamie Sheridan, .5 math and .5 science teacher, Feinstein Middle School. Caitlin Valetta, one-year-only, .7 math teacher, Feinstein Middle School. Brittany Carbone, one-year-only, 1.0 inclusion, grade 1 through 6 teacher, Washington Oak School. Amy Ferreira, one-year-only, .4 social worker, Washington Oak School. Kayla Vefai, 1.0 pre-K special education teacher, Washington Oak School. Wendy Arno, .4 inclusion teacher, Tyo School. Stacy Demello, one-year-only, 1.0 grade 4 teacher, Tyo School. Lindsay Harrington, one-year-only, .6 inclusion teacher, Hopkins Hill School. Ashley Dudley, 1.0 score teacher, Blackrock School. Lisa Clift, long-term substitute for the district.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second on that motion?
I second the motion.
Are there any other further questions from the school committee? I don't see any hand raised, anything from the public. I don't see anybody raising their hand either. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yep. Kathy Patnood?
Yes.
A Florio?
No. I agree with Mrs. Erinakis on this.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. One negative. My, my only final comment is, it's always sad because it's never a proposition that any of us likes to have to be involved in. And I regret that we had to make this decision tonight. And my heart goes out to all of the people that are on layoffs, and we'll see how it goes due to some other things that might happen. We might bring some of those people back. Only time will tell on that. That being said, I guess we can move on to the superintendent's report, which is our item number 10. So, Mr. Levis, you're on.
So there's three items here. One is the high school graduation. There's a lot of conversation. I want to thank the high school administration and the teacher leadership for working so hard, advocating so hard for, for our seniors. We have a plan, Ms. Maycumber and I actually talked about. When I say we, I, you know, I'll say it because I'm the superintendent, but they've worked so hard on a plan that is going to be following the guidance. I shared a plan with you, the school committee that I said was shot down, but then, that same day, I had a conversation with, or back and forth with Mr. Kevin Gallagher, liaison to the governor, and we've worked out some details. I have a document in writing. Hopefully tomorrow, that Ms. Maycumber and I will finalize the document, it may be finalized now, then I will share it with the committee. But basically, it's going to be a virtual event. We're going to have speeches that are being filmed, you know, individually. We'll follow all the guidelines in terms of no more than five people in an area. When the speeches, we'll be alone with a videographer. So the same speeches, we've invited the town council president, the same speeches will be videotaped. But I think what's important is we're going to make it, we hope to make it as special as possible for the individual, for the students. We're going to have appointments. They're going to arrive by car to the high school in, in intervals where they're spaced out. They will come into the high school. They will have, in the foyer, there'll be an opportunity to take photographs. We'll have a photographer there. They will then go into the auditorium, and in the auditorium, they'll be able to walk across the stage. Right now, the Department of Health wants to make sure that, again, the, what we have to follow is we need to make sure there's never more than five individuals. We're going to allow them to have two guests. We'll make sure that we, if anything, we'll have the opportunity to sanitize any area. There'll be no passing off of any documents, a diploma. But they'll be able to walk across the stage. We'll have that videotaped, and then they'll leave. And I believe we're going to have a section outside the auditorium where they can actually take photographs with their parents. And then they'll get back in their car, and they'll go. There'll never be contact between students. I believe Ms. Maycumber is going to try to do this over two days, and it'll all be put together and, you know, make it as special as possible. I think we were recognized, I believe, I was told that, even Warwick School Committee about just the efforts at the high school. They did a phenomenal job. The, you know, Kelly and her leadership at the CTA Scholarship Night, if you get a chance to watch that. I know they're going to do an awards night, and so they're still finding creative ways to celebrate and honor students. And so that's our plan. I, I'm probably leaving out some of the details, but I will share the document once we have it. I have a letter from Kevin Acoin that says, as long as you do this, this, and this, you know, no, no, no exchange of any documents. Make sure we're, making sure that any staff we have, they're sanitizing their hands continuously, that we have custodians available. We'll have police available. So I think they have a nice, again, it's very simple to the document I sent you, except we're going to do appointments. We're not going to have 10 cars line up, 10 cars on the street here, 10 cars. They're concerned when they hear that, you know, congregation of, a congregating of students and families. So we're going to set it up differently. It's going to be aggressive, and I think, you know, I believe Ms. Maycumber may still be on the, the meeting here. She is, and if she wants to add to that, Ms. Maycumber?
Yeah, so, so we're looking at June 6th and 7th to bring people in with two of their family members to do the walk across the stage and the pictures. We've hired a videographer to piece all of that together so that we can put it together in a graduation video. So the video will be released later on in the month. And then we are also looking into Channel 10 right now to air something on a Saturday night for an hour, looking to do like a celebration of the class, not really mimicking a graduation, but to, to celebrate this class. So some of the videos and stuff that we have of the kids, or perhaps some, like, guest speakers that we ask. We're, today, we videoed our class day presentations, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be putting that video together, but that came out great, and I think the kids are going to love it. And it's going to be, it's going to go along with their senior slideshow. And we're going to be doing that on June 2. We're going to be sending out that link for that. But first, we're going to do a faculty parade through town. We're going to meet up at the high school. We, Officer Nickerson and I did a parade route last week. We drove it. So it's probably going to take us about three hours, and we're going to hit probably every major neighborhood in town and even go out to Western. We'll publish the route so that people can be on it. We're going to encourage the seniors to come out in their captain's towns and all of our students to be out there. And then when that finishes at Western, we're going to upload the link and email that out to the kids so they can watch the class day presentation, which is pretty upbeat and fun, and I think the kids are really going to like that a lot. So, you know, it's, it's hard. It's, it's probably the best plan we can do right now that we're allowed to do, and because we're such a large school, it's just so impossible to do some of the things that other smaller schools are able to do. So, yeah. And we're also, one more thing, we're, we're live streaming our awards night on the 21st, and that is pretty much, that looks very much like the same awards night we do every year in the auditorium. So we are not telling the kids what awards they have won, but we are letting them know if they're getting an award so that they're watching it. And then we'll be delivering awards to their houses over the weekend.
Well, thank you so much for that, Brooke. Mr. Levis, did you want to say anything else about that?
No, I, I just, you know, thing I've repeated all along, I get, you know, inundated from the news media about, you know, what are we doing and what's going on? And one thing I've stressed, and I'm sure most communities probably stress this, but it's been so apparent through this whole ordeal is that, and I've had many conversations with people who are on this Zoom meeting, that when we're talking about seniors or students, they're in tears because they love our teachers, our staff, our custodian. I mean, I could mention everybody. They love their students. They love their, their families. And I think it's, you know, it's reciprocated by, our students love and miss. I was with somebody, had a Zoom classroom, and, you know, I think the student says, I don't believe I'm telling you, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I really miss you, you know? And it's apparent with the, the process that's going on at the high school, just, I'm just so appreciative. You know, it makes you feel that sense of community. We know these are incredibly challenging times, but to be part of something where, you know, you can, you, you know, you use the term love, and it, and it's so apparent in the interactions with, with the, our individuals in our school community. You know, I'm so grateful, but thankful for Brooke and the, the high school, you know, all of our staff, but the high school staff, they're doing an incredible job trying to make this as special and trying to, you know, help these students realize that, you know, that, that, they, there is a legacy. So I want to thank Brooke and your staff, you know, and families, you guys, and students. Been amazing. Thank you. So, having said that, the second part of my report is about pulling together a task force. I had mentioned earlier that I'm, I'm working with an individual that just is involved in this work in other states, and, you know, they're three or four weeks into this already, looking at, you know, doing scenario planning, so mapping out a variety of different plans for whatever reentry looks like, and then costing them out, staffing, you know, looking at staff, looking at all the potential, you know, possibilities and needs. So what I wanted just to throw out there tonight, I've had a couple of conversations with individuals, even school committee members, town officials. I've reached out to, right now, just to the police. We have the SROs, both of them, Mr. John Nickerson and, and A.J. Maderos, they're going to be part of, you know, representing the police, Chief Frank Brown. But I wanted to kind of just have a little conversation with the school committee. I had mentioned to Ms. Patnood, I believe, you know, we need town officials, we need community members part of this, we need parents, we're going to need our, our, our union leadership, our facilities, finance. I mean, there's so many individuals, but we also need to make it manageable. So I'd like some feedback from the school committee. My, my goal is to put a task force together, like an overarching task force together by next Friday. And then, but from that work, you know, when, when we did, I was on a conference call, I believe with the governor's office, where they were saying, you know, every school could be even different because just because of the design and some of the, the availability. So we need to break it down even to that level, school by school, what that would look like. You know, my big concern about this is just equity. You know, and again, I, I feel that if we don't have this budget passed, that no matter what we do, we may not be able to open school. And those are my thoughts based on, again, based on everything I've heard. We know over time, like with the COVID-19, there'll be more clarification, but we also know things change in a heartbeat, right? We know that, you know, I was adamant when this started, that, you know, because the experts were saying, if you're asymptomatic, there's no concern. And we, we stood by that. I stood by that because I'm not a medical expert. And then we find out later on, well, that's not true, right? So as we go through this process, you know, we need to have key people, include all the stakeholders, but it also has to be manageable. So I, I thought tonight, just getting some feedback, and again, you know, Ms. Patnood, you decide in terms of the school committee and committee. I'm hoping that this would be a committee that it wouldn't have to be public session. And again, not to be, I don't want to not be transparent, but my feeling is that we want to do work and then bring that work back to the public bodies. I believe we need to have, you know, the town representation, whether that's town council, the town manager. But that's what I wanted to open up to the committee, just a brief conversation about who your thoughts might be in terms of how we make up this task force tonight, just some feedback from you, and then I can bring that back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Levis. Let's, um, let's do that right now, then, before you finish your report. Mr. Florio, what's your feeling on this? Who do you think needs to be on? What's your feedback?
I like the idea of members of the public being on it. Yeah, I like the bipartisan support that Mr. Levis has gathered. Yeah, I like the bipartisan support that Mr. Levis has gathered. And one parent who's particularly interested in being on this, I instructed her to give you a call, Mr. Levis. There are, there are a lot of concerned parents and a lot of concerned grandparents and a lot of people, veterans. If you need a school committee member or if you want school committee members, you're more than happy to sit on it. I'm sure other school committee members at the time wouldn't mind being on it either. Teachers, that's a necessity, you know that, SRP people. So you have, you know what you're doing, Mr. Levis, on this particular issue. So I'm just going to voice my support. And thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray, your thoughts?
I think in general, a task force is a good idea. You know, we obviously did. It was already mentioned, we don't know what the framework of this whole thing's going to be. So obviously, you know, we'll be spitballing ideas, but then ultimately it'll become down to the state and other guidance to frame how this happens. But stating the obvious, you know, I'd like to see parents involved. But we already have a lot of organizations at the school level, the PTAs, PTOs, some of the school leadership at the middle school, the parent leadership. So, you know, I just would encourage pulling off of some of the resources you already have available, who are familiar with school operations. That's probably not insightful at all. But, but I do agree with the concept of trying to include as many people as possible in the process. But like I said, you know, creating some framework in advance on how decision-making is made, which direction you go. Because what can happen is with so many people involved, these things tend to go different directions. So creating that framework instead of boxing people in upfront on how that decision process needs to be made and making sure they stick with the guidance that's out there. But yeah, it's tough for the community. This time of the year feels so ho-hum. Somebody said today, I seem down. I'm not. It's just, it's been a tough couple of months. I think for parents, for administrators, for, you know, the town council, for the school committee, for everybody involved. This is not an easy thing to tackle. So I think as moving forward, turning it into a positive, of trying to say, we have a challenge, we need to address it. We need to be positive about it. And we're going to get our kids back to school and get our economy running is a, you know, sort of a bounce off point to positive horizons here. So yeah, involve the current leadership as much as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colunian?
I, I agree with both Mr. Murray and Mr. Florio. We, we can have like a few school committee members. We definitely want to have some teachers in there. And we've got to get the community involved. You know, they've got to know what's going on. And like Luke said, you can pull from like the PTA or the PTO, you know, and just get, get people involved. So this is their schools too. I think that you might get some good ideas. A lot of times, you know, people come up with like, they have ideas and they're afraid to say anything. But if you get them involved, they may come up with some good ideas. So I think that, you know, as everyone said, just get as many people from the community involved as you can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Like we did with the comprehensive plan, this is about team building and getting a variety of voices. What's going to be most important here is, I will agree with the fact that, you know, every building can be different. So you really have to have the voice of the people who are going to be in that building or who are going to have students in that building to be your key group of people and keep as many of us politicians and bureaucrats out of it until, until some recommendations are made. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I'm just going to follow up again, reiterating what other people have said. I think parents and teachers involved on every level is critical only because they're going to have a different viewpoint on, on what's happening. I think the dynamics of the committee need to be looked at because if it becomes too unwieldy, you won't get any work done. And obviously, a lot of the guidelines are still in the works that are going to be coming down from RIDE and from the governor. So I, I think it's a great idea to start the process, you know, with your leadership team, Craig, because they're all going to be involved, obviously. And, and then go from there. But I definitely think, you know, parents who are living this way more than even all of the school committee members, their, their kids, they're doing remote learning with their kids, they're at home, whatever. Their, their voice will be really necessary and from the different levels as well.
Yeah. And I don't want to exclude groups. I wanted to have your feedback. But like our nurses are going to be crucial. Our custodians, they know the building. I mean, one thing that I believe Sarah and myself and then my other people, maybe it was a leadership meeting, but had talked about was, right now, you look at our nurse's office and how archaic they are, right? For the most part, everywhere. But with the, going into the school, if we have a student that comes in that has symptoms, we're supposed to isolate them. Well, where, right? So we need to be thinking about, how do we create additional space? Knowing that, you know, something that we'll probably talk about our next school committee meeting, Mr. Murray is, our Stage One, you know, our facilities, a school building committee. You know, we, we're still dealing with 1960s, 1970s schools for the most part. And, but these are things we need to think about. How our nurses operate, nursing office, nurses' office. And, you know, we haven't thought about. So we want as many players in as Mr. Pearson said, people that know the building, live in the building. Because we're going to have to rethink what education looks like. You know, kind of put everything we think we know about education and not get rid of it, discard it, but put it up on a shelf and then kind of go at this with new ideas. The last part, point I want to make about this is that I feel we have to get started because RIDE hasn't, the governor's office has pulled together a group of people. There might have been a couple of superintendents on it. But, you know, my experience is guidance comes out late and it, and it comes out and it changes. So that's why I stressed the whole idea of scenario planning. We're going to have to think about what the different options will be. I'm sure you hear a lot of things out there. I hear a lot of things out there. But like today, we received some guidance today about extended school year, today. And then they want it back by the 28th. Well, anybody that knows that has, you know, any child, but, but a child with a disability, there needs to be purposeful, you know, dialogue and reflection about a plan. So we want to just start it, start, you know, this process. And like I said, I appreciate the feedback. And we'll keep everybody posted. And, you know, again, want the, the right makeup, but we also want it to be manageable. So, and we'll set those parameters that Mr. Murray talked about. So I appreciate your feedback on that. That's all I have to say about that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Levis. And I think it's a great idea. I think it's definitely a necessity. And you're right, the sooner we start it, the better. And it would be great if we didn't have all the school committee members there or quorum so that you didn't have to post them. So we'll come up with, you know, maybe when you start rolling, thinking about this, you can, we can all email you to see if we're interested.
Well, yeah, we can, we can create some type of document too that we can share. And, you know, I want, I want it to be a transparent process and have input. We can survey. It's just that it has to be manageable. I think that's the key is, and we, there has to be outcomes. We have to have an aggressive timeline. Because I have no idea, you know, I have no idea what the fall will look like. There's so many ideas out there. There's, you know, we have European models. We look at what Sweden's done, what France, they just opened schools up this week, their experience. So, I mean, we have models to look at. But we also, what I've shared is like, you know, people look at the summer as a time to rejuvenate, respite. And I, I had a meeting with our leadership team Monday and I said, you know, we're going to really have to think about it because we were thrown into this, right? This was thrown at us and we've done an incredible job. This community has been supportive of one another. But now we have to plan, right? Now, we're not going to have a week where teachers are allegedly on, you know, spring break, but they're busting their butt trying to be reflective. And they've been reflective practitioners throughout this process. Now we've got to come up with better ideas. What's this going to look like? You know, we might have parents who don't want to send their kids back to school or first graders, but we have a group that are. How do we manage that, right? So, I mean, these are things that I don't, that's just one issue. So we'll keep everybody informed. And I appreciate, like I said, the feedback.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, and Mr. Pearson really brought it up. So it was, I was asked to look at the FTM and forgot what the other part was. But I was told today, also, I didn't hear this from anybody. I was told today that I knew the council was going to look at the contract Friday night. We didn't know that. But I had no idea about the, the FTM and I had no idea about putting the budget off. They had talked about it. You know, I had heard that they had talked about the leagues of cities and towns trying to put the budget off till September. That's what I had heard that they were asking for. So it'll be interesting. I'll be on the, you know, the town council tomorrow. But I think as Mr. Pearson said, we'll see what happens. I'm sure there'll be a lot of people on because it's the third time that they're voting on the contract. So I'm sure there'll be hundreds of people. I'm hoping that they purchased the, I'm hoping that they purchased, we had to purchase Zoom for 300 because the initial purchase that we did only, only allows 100 people on. So we went back and our executive session is the basic package that allows 100. We'll never have that executive. But this section, this session here, we can have up to 300. So I'm hoping that they purchase that because I would hate to have people locked out of tomorrow night's meetings. We'll see. But anybody that has connections with the council might want to, you know, see if they have the right version of Zoom. Because typically, when you pay to get the dial in numbers, it's just 100 participants.
I, I think they're using the state version. The state provided every municipality or Zoom, which had the webinar function, which is good for up to 500.
Oh. Oh, good. Good for them, good for them. I wish they provided it to us. Maybe we can access that. I'm not sure. So anyways, I think Mr. Pearson had answered what potentially is going to happen. I know he just posted. So, you know, we'll see what happens if they pass the resolutions. So that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Was there any further question or comments from the school committee before we move on to citizens' comments?
I think I should say one thing. Sorry. No, I didn't get a chance to comment on Brooke's plan. But Brooke, cheer up. I think you came up, the schools came up with a great plan for graduation. I know it's a tough time. And it's, it's, it's not easy for the seniors. But I think on a positive, I'm really looking forward to the parade because I was actually going to ask about that. Because it's, seniors don't usually get a chance, or I would say the town usually doesn't get a chance as a whole to celebrate our seniors in our graduation class. We usually sit as a pool down at URI or another venue and the parents are there, but the whole town doesn't get to necessarily celebrate. So I think publicizing it, having people be able to go out on their lawns and create signs and, you know, cheer on the parade, I think is great. And so there is one, you know, that's, it's one positive I see out of it is that the whole town gets to celebrate our class. So I think it's a great plan. And I'm sure the parents will, will appreciate it as well.
Yeah. Thank you. And I did owe that too. I'm very much looking forward to a parade. That sounds very exciting. Even if I have to drive wherever I have to go to see it, I will do that.
We made sure we weren't right by your house.
Oh, good. I'll be out there cheering away.
I think there's only one other student in the neighborhood, but I said, we have to go by.
I think there were three seniors in my neighborhood.
There are a lot of signings in my neighborhood. When we drove the route, we probably drove by about 75 graduation signs. So we know we're hitting a lot of homes where people live. And we're very, and we're really close to how their kids live that they could care. It'll be, that'll be fun. And I will say the class day video is awesome. We did it today and I'll do the edits on it. But it's upbeat and it's, it is so much better than I thought it was going to be. It's really good. I think the kids will be happy with it. But it's just hard. It's, you know, no matter what we do, it's not themed, you know? But this class is amazing. There's also a group that started on Facebook. It's not related to the school, but adopting the senior. And it has taken off. It's already, I think, up to about 250 seniors that people have adopted. And, but the, the woman who, and her daughter who are organizing it have done such a great job with it. So there are so many ways that people want to be involved. I've seen like Ernie Jimiko and the Alumni Association are doing a lot to try to celebrate the seniors as well. So, and we're also doing things just within the building so that we can like have a good memory of them too. You know, we hung up, Jim Pearson has the mural behind him. We had that hung in the main foyer for them. And we're actually looking at getting tiles for them that are the same size as their graduation caps that they'll get so they can paint them. And we can mount them to some plywood and put them up around the building so that, you know, you know, this is a really special class. They're, they're, this is, if any class can deal with this situation, it is this class. But it, it's just so amusing that it's just sad that it's this class.
Well, I thank you, Brooke. And I thank all of the people at the high school for their awesome ideas and their planning on this because it will not be forgotten. This is a special time. And when all is said and done, I think it'll be amazing. That being said, are there any citizens' comments out there? I don't see anybody with any hand raised. Jim Murphy, do you see anybody?
I don't see any hands.
I don't see anything. Going once, going twice. Okay, I guess we can entertain a motion to schedule our next meeting. Item number 12.
Madam Chair, I, hold on, let me get this up. I want to schedule the next meeting for May 28, 2020 at 6:00 p.m.
Second motion.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote on that?
Kathy Patino?
Yes.
Dave Florio? Looks like he's going. Donna? Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colunian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries for a zero. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 8:11 p.m.
Is there a second on that?
Second motion.
All in favor? If we all can just raise our hand. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so much to all of the people that are watching this and the future people that may watch the recording. I appreciate all the work and hard effort of everyone that makes this possible, including Mr. Murphy. Thank you so much always for your technical assistance and your help in setting up these Zoom meetings for us.